Do a little explanation. And state who you are, because I'll have to take minutes, too.
Hi, I'm Mark Benson. I'm the land surveyor for the A and R plan.
Oh, good, okay. And we have, we have the Form As. There are two copies? One copy.
It should be two.
Two copies. We're going to signature this. So we have it. It's on Century Drive. And roll. We've seen this in multiple different ways for site plan review, for comments on the...
Yeah, this is the, what's down by the, um...
On the western side of things, right? Yes, the four lots.
Yep.
The ones that are left.
Right.
On the... Two miles, or like two meters? So we have these. And it's the four lots that we had a site plan review on, I think a year ago now. Um, it's been a while. So, A and R, how do we review it? What are the things we need to look for?
Not sure.
A and R is frontage.
Okay.
And access. So, they have, the required frontage is listed on here, I think. I think it's 150, but it's listed on there, I think right by your right hand.
It's on your, the other sheet.
Other sheet?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It'd be on the zoning, zoning table.
Is that a zoning table?
Yeah.
Oh, that was on the first sheet. So on the zoning summary, what's the frontage requirement?
Lot frontage, 150.
So 150. So we check to make sure all the lots have 150 feet of frontage?
Lot 62 is exactly 150.
That's all, as long as it gets 150, that's all.
Wait, just so I understand what we're doing here. We're looking at all the lots or one specific lot?
Every lot. He's doing the A and R for four lots.
Okay.
Four now.
And our regulator, we can, so it has, as long as it has frontage and access. So this area here, I think, is, there's wetland area down in this area, is that right? So that may not be accessible, but he has enough access uphill of that to, um, to have the frontage, I assume. That's what we're looking at. As long as he's got enough access in the up, upland area, he can get up to lot 59. Because this is a change here, this lot between...
There was five, right? Wasn't there five?
I thought there was six.
No. There's always been four lots.
Four, as far as I know, yeah.
Oh.
So, but I remember this being straight.
Doing it off of memory.
Do you remember any of the history on this? We did a site plan review and I, I thought it was just a straight line in there, but it could have been angled.
I don't, I don't...
You just did the, this one?
No, I mean, they gave me the lots, um, that they want, that they wanted to set, so, um... And this was the only configuration I saw. I know they had the, I know they had submitted site plans earlier, though.
Right. But either way, it turns out that as long as they have access up into that lot, which it appears it do, because they, there's a utility easement. So the things we look for are frontage and access. So we can sign the plans as long as it has a little note on our, on the signature saying, "Conformance with," or making it a building lot is not... All right, "No determination as to compliance with zoning requirements" has been made or is intended by the planning board's endorsement of this plan. So generally, um, we, we have that, or we always have that. So when we sign it, it doesn't mean it's a buildable lot. It just means that it has adequate frontage and access. And then on this one in particular, I'm not sure, but just looking at it, it appears on this lot 62, that required frontage is required to go all the way back. So as long as he has 150 feet all the way back, this is a buildable lot. If it doesn't, that's not a buildable lot. So you gotta go this line here.
So the question is, from this point to this point, is that looks like the tightest spot? Is that 150?
Well, it's, it's their responsibility to do that. If they need to revise this plan because this is not a buildable lot and they want to make it a buildable lot, then they're going to have to revise this property line to give the 150 feet. So by us signing it, we sign it as frontage and access, but it's not buildable. When it goes to the building inspector, the building inspector should check to make sure that it has 150 feet all the way back to the building line. So where, and I think the building is going to be up here, but, um...
Are you talking about minimum lot width?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I'm, was that on the table?
Nope.
No, okay.
This is Century Drive?
Yes.
Yes.
So the, in that case, you know, they, do they have to go back to the court?
Um, I don't know. Land Court is a whole different story. I don't really know.
Yeah, this has been...
I know.
Before Land Court.
You got from the court.
Yeah.
So if there is a change, do you have to go back to the court? That's my question.
Uh, I think if it's a minor, if it's a minor change, I can just, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I mean, either, either way, the, the product goes to the court after this.
Yeah. Okay.
That's it with this?
Any other questions for? Just that one? Yeah. And the second page is for what?
Uh, that's just the dimension to put the math on all the easements.
Oh, and that's not on the other? I mean, it's always all I have.
They're notified, I mean, they're marked on the original, but at that, these are bigger scales, so you could read all the numbers.
And that's what we're...
So, yeah, these, these are just... Well, no, but they're just in order to dimension and all the...
Oh, okay.
Bearings and distances, we needed to make them bigger.
All right. Okay. Zena? Do you want to take over the chair?
No, 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 go ahead.
All right, so we have a motion to endorse the two, the A and R for, what is it? Birdland?
Lot 52, Century Drive.
Yeah, I have to write the minutes, too, so... Motion to endorse lot 54, is it?
Lot 52, Century Drive.
A and R, two sheets. Do we have a motion for that?
Some more.
Um, which lot? All of them?
All four.
Only 54.
Well, the whole thing is...
Oh, this one, okay.
Yeah. It's all lot 54.
I'm getting confused with, with lot 62, 59, about...
Only 54.
So it's broken up?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the green perimeter is the original Land Court lot 54, which is broken up into a new four.
There was a motion, right? Did we have a second here?
We don't have a motion yet.
He said, yeah.
Oh. Actually, you're the chair, so...
No, you want someone else?
Well, you made the... Are you making the motion then?
Why don't you make the motion?
All right, Kevin can make the motion.
Sure.
I'll second it. You now take over the chair, so...
Okay. We have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Here we go.
Can we sign it?
Yes, we can sign it. Oh, I didn't get the pen. You don't happen to have a Mylar pen, do you?
I don't.
Is it somewhere in here?
I got it. It's locked, so I figured what key. Uh, you guys want the minutes while I'm up?
Okay. Uh, okay. Have you seen the minutes?
Uh, I don't remember that I have.
Yes, sir.
Minutes?
Do we have them printed somewhere?
No, we had them emailed.
We can have this tablet.
I can't remember if I read them or not. If I looked at them quickly, I could tell you if I did.
I think they did send the minutes.
You get an email?
Hmm, no, I don't think so.
Email, guys?
Yes, I think it was with the agenda.
Let me just quickly look. I can probably refresh my memory if I see them.
So this is a May 8th, 20... I think Melanie's did send it to this. Uh, Vinnie sent it to this, two minutes.
Vinnie did?
Yeah. To the planning board.
Do you know when?
Uh, very recently.
Thank you.
No, not long ago.
Within a week.
Oh, I got it, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
All right.
Do you need a pen?
Nope, I got it. We have a special one, but I don't want to use it on the paper. So we have these, if you guys want to start signing at some point, too. We gotta sign six copies of two sheets and then the two Mylars.
You guys do the Mylar once, because you probably got a pen.
We have to spin these around.
Are they, are they all the same or not?
Very... Yes, it's two, two sets, six of two sets. I would sign one by one, if I can figure...
I think this, this half of that.
Berlin Hills. Six, twelve, twenty-four. Over here on this one, huh?
Come on, wake up.
I'm up.
Thank you.
I was waiting.
That's why you shouldn't be hanging out with the neck. It's a bad influence.
For this pen, then?
No.
No, that's only for the Mylar. Any regular pen works, but... If you need one, I get this.
Well, I want to switch over there, because it's already there. Vinnie missed, uh, uh...
What?
Frankie missed one. This one.
Okay.
It's one, it's a copy.
Well, it's a six, two-sheet set, so two times six. I'm a little disappointed at that, yeah. Evidently it...
Might have gotten you there.
Well, yeah, I probably sat for too long, too. Because we were, we missed the last meeting by like a, like a...
Oh, really?
A few days, yeah.
So, because it's a majority anyways, will Mark have to sign it?
Nope.
Okay.
All we need is three. Got one, thank you. There. Start signing on the other side.
Can you hear this? I think that's your phone.
Can I grab that pen? Thank you.
That's yours, right?
Right.
Did you sign it?
If you need three, I don't have to, but...
No, sign it. Your signature will be there forever, and the rest will be...
I can show my kids.
Grandkids.
Grandkids, yeah, ah. Sorry, bud.
You're not for your daddy, no.
Frankie.
Yeah, someone else wants to write in the date and the number on the, on that set there. We have to write in a 6122481P3 under...
Six, twelve, twenty-four.
Eighty-one, P3.
What's that eighty-one, P3's name for?
Eighty-one, P, eighty-one, P plans. And it's the third one we've done in 2024. So we just keep tracking that one.
So the Mylar...
You write on every, every one of these, or somebody's in?
So where the signature block is, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Six, twelve, twenty-four, eighty-one, P3. So the Mylar goes to him?
Yes. And we have to give this to the county clerk.
There we go. Thank you.
Vinnie, you sign these over here?
Uh, yes.
Um, I didn't check. Did you sign these, or were you...
Yeah, no, I signed all of them.
These are what you take from the Mylars, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, we have, we just...
Yeah, only three, but...
Only, that's all.
So, so I'm good?
You are good. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Bye, thank you.
Are they recording this meeting?
What's that?
Are they recording it?
Yes. You can move on, I can, it's going to take me a little bit.
Okay, have you seen the minutes?
I have.
I did.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes from last meeting.
Second.
Uh, this is for the May 8th regular meeting?
Yeah.
May 8th, public hearing meetings, both?
The public hearing and the regular meeting?
Yeah.
Pub, yeah.
Okay, you are seconding it?
I'll second.
Okay. We have motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So Frank, motion. Kevin, second. Okay. The next one is in a members, members' signature and authorization numbers. So this normally, you know, we do it, any member of the board can be authorized signatures. This is for, where is it? We, 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 we should have a form, right?
It's in there.
Okay. So everyone has to sign it. So this goes for the town accountant. So we are signing the bills. So the town accountants should have a specimen copy of this. So, uh, name of the board of planning.
So I think are we, yeah.
Print the name.
Just all just put their name on?
So, yeah, we all put the name, so the bottom line is, you know. So we have the signatures, right? Anyone can sign this and it goes back to the...
Right, so, I mean, there's a bill or a...
Yeah.
Anything that comes in, it needs signatures. It can be anyone's.
Sign it, the bills.
Oh, so they have proof of our...
Yes. Specific signature on file. Do we need to, yeah, we need to get a motion on this?
Yes.
Kevin?
What?
We have a motion to approve the sign, uh, members' signature and authorization numbers.
And authorizing one member to sign?
Any, any, any member can sign it.
Any member can sign it, right, so we did it last time.
The motion is, any planning board member can sign the bills.
I motioned it?
He motioned it.
Yo, I'm seconding, yes.
Yeah, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Uh, so I'd like to table this one, board position and assignment for next meeting, because I like to keep the mix.
Yeah, Mark's not here, so that makes sense.
This is okay with everyone?
That's fine with me, Raj.
I'm okay with that.
You can wait to be chair for a little while, Frank?
Yeah.
Years.
They can, they can take it.
Still learning.
If you want to take over the chair, you know, I can leave it now.
I don't have those bouncy soups like that, though, I don't...
No, this is not for that.
Raj, you keep...
No, this is just...
I, I have, I think I have one, that's, that's it, though.
Yeah, he's been coming in shot every time.
I can't, I can't show up every time at the same one.
That's good.
So this is for another...
Yeah, we'll pass it on with the next meeting.
Okay. So town meeting reports, nothing happened in the town meeting, except the... Except the two and a half override failed.
There you go. The what failed?
Two and a half override miserably failed.
Two and a half override. That go to town.
So they asked for $2 million for the schools, $2 million for the town.
Yeah.
So the town overwhelmingly, uh, super majority, they all said no. So it failed. And, uh...
Well, we have no limitations on the chickens, that...
The chicken is, the chicken bylaw was failed, uh, in a big time.
But the chicken law?
Bylaw.
Bylaw, meaning what?
They were, they were attempting to change, add a bylaw about the number of chickens one, one home can have.
How many chickens you can eat one day, you and the...
Chick, I can eat one day?
How many chicken you can eat one day, that is, uh...
Probably four.
You and Nate.
Oh, me and Nate?
Nate and the Tom.
Probably ten.
Nate and the Tom Castro.
Yeah, so that was...
That one failed. The, one of those things passed was the, we were working so hard on the storm auto bylaw that did, somebody opposed it from the planning board.
So two people were...
Two people from the planning board spoke up?
Uh, spoke up, but the...
Vinnie and myself.
Yeah, that didn't go through.
No, it did pass.
It did pass, yeah.
It passed, they didn't listen to it.
They didn't listen to the planning board, yeah.
I didn't know anything about it, because I wasn't involved in any of it.
Well, that's, that's the whole point.
For the stormwater?
We, they, in this, in their, the past article says that the planning board will enact regulations...
Yeah, we're supposed to, we're supposed to be all about it and...
But they never told us that we were going to be the ones doing that. Last time we met with them was a year ago and we made comments and then never anything...
No, he's, he's the one that's been signing things for a treasurer or the, or the whatever, the accountant. He's been doing it, so let him do it. Until we assign new, he should be doing it.
No, anyone can.
I know they can, but he's been doing it.
Anywhere saying, we have 10 lines, any 10 lines.
Uh, do we have the other, uh, Form As? Do you have that tip?
I have. I wrote on it.
Yes, yet we're all set. I just need to put it in the file.
Oh.
Our new clerk.
Okay, I think that's, uh...
When do we do that, the new clerk?
You want to say any of the other things?
On town meeting?
No.
Town meeting, do you have anything to say, town meeting? Did you go to the town meeting?
I didn't make it, no. I didn't make it.
That's frustrating, you know, you know? You got to, as a board member, you should have...
I know I should, but I, I couldn't.
Yeah.
You had other obligations, apparently. I would say.
Uh, yeah, okay. So the next, uh, next, uh, July 10th, 2024, some...
Nope, hold on, we need to, uh, establish a subcommittee to hire or interview a, a clerk, a replacement clerk, right?
Yeah, correspondence and email, you know, Melanie resigned. And we do need to talk about the hiring process. Um, I, I would like to, if, if you have any comments, you know, you can say that, but can we hold up to March comes?
For another month? Who's going to be doing all the work, then?
You.
That's...
One month.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye!
Oppose.
I don't know the chicken, it's not on the motion.
So this is also tabled, two, two things are tabled, one is the board position and assignment and also the...
So, wait a minute, just, I, I have a question. On the, regarding the subcommittee, there's five planning board members. Subcommittee is, is having...
We made it two, so it's, it doesn't have to be an advertised public meeting.
Yeah, so there are, there are, there are...
That's what we've done in the past.
I see.
It is, it is a bit controversial. I do need to, I do need to clear my mind how to do this.
Okay.
So that's why I, I like...
Are there other people in the town that are on this committee?
No, only the planning board.
Just the planning board?
Planning board, but...
No town administrator or anything like that?
The planning board...
I don't need to read that, some of the articles sent into the planning board, not to me as a chair. So I will read on it. And then once I read, once I clear my mind, how to go over it. Either it is going to be, we need to advertise the job. And once we added advertise, so we need to have a such committee, whether, whether we can, so the select board, the way we did, we, we, uh, we hired the town administrator process, I know it. So we sent in the, you know, we hired the firm and then they brought in some application, 10 application. So we made a subcommittee of two members. So those two of us were there, they looked at the, all the applications. They brought to the board four applications. And then the board, we include our four members. By the time we include four members, two members dropped out. So we are, we are reduced to only two members. So then after...
The entire board does?
And they, well, you know, open meeting and then board has to include. That is the process.
Okay.
So I got some information regarding this.
Yeah.
How to proceed with this, but I did not read due to my work thing, I'm not wanting to remember here. And also there are, there are many other things happened from then to now. So I don't have the time, I don't have the energy to do it, you know, open meeting, I'm saying this. So let's see, you know, when Mark comes in, you know, he may have some ideas, too. So we can all discuss and it's not a big deal, you know, so this is a very...
Well, I'm thinking that we should probably get something sooner than later, though, right?
No, you know, one meeting is...
Realistically, this is, that's an important part of the, of the planning work.
Right. Yeah, someone's got to be answering the phone.
Should be... Where does the phone ring, here?
Yeah.
So some, whoever is hired has a...
It currently goes to Melanie's email.
Okay.
I could deal with this.
Who was going to deal with it?
Who will be checking the cellphone things, let them forward it to us. So I can take care of that. You know, if some of the messages comes to things, I will answer it, I will take care of this, uh, you know.
Or send it to somebody.
We'll take care of this for a month.
Okay.
Do we want to wait a month? Do we have a little special meeting via Zoom or, or...
No, it's, the, the question is, is in the past, I've interviewed four, four secretaries over the last 20 years, 25 years, however long it's been. And typically what we do is we have two people do the interview, or they, they get a posting, review the resumes, everyone gets to review the resumes, the group of two reviews, interviews that are top... review the resumes, everyone gets to review the resumes, the group of two reviews, interviews, they're top people. If we have more than two, sometimes that doesn't even happen, but then they review it, say, okay, we have this person and that person, and we like A. And they recommend applicant A to the rest of the board, and at a public hearing, at a public meeting. And then at that public meeting, the whole board votes to select that one. So the board gets all the resumes, but only two members actually do the interviewing, so that we don't have to do it during a public meeting.
Right, gotcha.
There is some, there is some, there is some back and forth thing. So I need to clear this.
And there's a question.
Until then, you know, we can do this, one month, it's not a thing.
And then from that.
But also, you know, I don't know whether we can authorize before that.
We got interest. I sent the email, asked me a question, and I haven't gotten a response.
Yeah, so to the town, I think?
Yeah.
She did say.
But again, we're talking, okay, a month before we make a sub, ready, and then probably another month before we do any.
We need to get the.
We're talking maybe three months from now?
No, we need to rolling, we need to roll on with the, uh, authorization.
I understand that, but that's at least a month from now, right?
No, no, authorization can go on. We don't have, we don't have to approve that, do we have to approve the planning board?
Well, it's, I think it's pretty standardized, and Jen was good, Jen sent us a draft of what was put out for Board of Health, similar description of what we'd be looking for with some changes.
No, if that is the case, you know, we can order Zoom meeting, quick Zoom meeting.
No, I don't know that we need to vote on it, it's.
If you have to vote on it, I will order a quick Zoom meeting. Let me clear, clear these things in a couple of days.
All right.
And then, you know, we can, if you, if you have to have a meeting.
I just, I'm just, like, it's, like, it seems like time is of the essence, as opposed to waiting another month, and then another month, and then another month before we actually get a person that sits in the chair, does just the minutes and all the other stuff.
It could be more, we cannot get anybody. We are not paying a hundred dollars per hour.
No, we're not.
Yeah, and there, there may be changes in the board too.
Gotcha. Okay. And on that same note, Melanie was very appreciative of the card and the thoughts. She thought that was great, she was.
And town administrator wanted the key, and if you want to hand out the key, can I have the key?
You can.
Yeah, as a chair, I can have it, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Key too, what the?
Key on town, kid, big key. That's right.
It's in my hat, right behind you, but.
Okay, so is that okay, Kevin?
Yes.
So, yeah, that, that's the thing, you know, so this.
Maybe someone in the background, that's all.
Yeah, I know. Okay, is there a motion urgent? If there is nothing else?
Our next meeting is July tenth?
Yes.
Next meeting is July tenth, something else.
I have minutes here, I was keeping track of it.
So there are other things, you know, Frank obviously made the motion, and Kevin obviously made the second.
All right.
All right, so what are we, a motion over here?
Motion urgent?
Second, that motion.
All in favor? Kevin made the motion, and Frank made the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, this is not debatable, get out.